So 6:00 PM. Buenas tardes. Bienvenidos a la reunión del Consejo de la Ciudad de East Hampton. Hoy miércoles, septiembre 21, 2022. Esta reunión está siendo grabada y transmitida en vivo por East Hampton Media, por el canal 193 de Charter y en su canal de YouTube. Los concejales y participantes en esta reunión están participando de manera híbrida por la orden ejecutiva del gobernador Baker permitiéndolo hasta marzo 2023. Les recuerdo a ambos miembros de la comunidad y a los concejales mantenerse en silencio hasta que sea reconocido por el presidente. A los que están participando de manera remota, por favor, mantenga la cámara apagada hasta que participe en la audiencia pública. Gracias. That's in honor of the Hispanic Heritage Month. Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, September 21st. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on their YouTube channel. All councilors are participating in this meeting at gathering hybrid on the executive order by Governor Baker extended to March 2023, which allowed us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public to remain mute until recognized by the council president also. For the member of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak time or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Marianne.
Connie Denham.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
David Munier.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Owen Zerret.
Present.
That's it. Please stand up for the place of the lead.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one day individual with liberty and justice.
For the approval of the minutes, I'm not going to take any motions tonight because it's some concerns about the minutes and we're going to review it one more time. We're going to send it back to Barbara, then which she can redo it, and then we're going to approve it at our next meeting. Public speak time. Is anyone here that wants to talk to the council that is not part of the public hearing? Now is the time to talk to the council. I will allow you to have three minutes. Please address to the council, be respectful, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Cindy Mojica. I live at 14 Clark Avenue, and today I just come to promote four events for the high school. Buenas noches. Hoy vengo a invitar a toda la comunidad hispana y de East Hampton a celebrar las actividades que estamos ofreciendo en la Escuela Superior de East Hampton, con el motivo de celebrar el mes de la Hispanidad y todo lo que nuestra comunidad ha contribuido a los Estados Unidos. Las actividades son las siguientes. Septiembre 30, tendremos una presentación de la película In the Heights. Octubre 6, el panel de nuestros héroes. Octubre 11, presentación de la historia de nuestra cultura y contribuciones a los Estados Unidos. Octubre 14, cerraremos el mes con una fiesta y con invitados que presentarán mesas e información para nuestra comunidad. Good evening. My name is Cindy, and I'm here to promote four activities that we're going to be having at East Hampton High School. Motive is Hispanic Heritage Month. The first activity that we're going to have is September 30th, is a movie night in the Heights, and then we're going to have local hero panels October 6th. Then going to have Hispanic Heritage in the USA presentation, and these are two sessions. One is at 2:30 to 3:30. Second session is 5 to 6. They're open to the public. And then we're going to close with a fiesta in our show that is going to be held by the students of the high school. And also, this one is 5:30 to 7. We're going to have tables at the fiesta, and these are going to be our local nonprofits like the Coalition, SPFE, ACC, and Neighbor to Neighbor, and others. So we are welcoming all to come and spend time with us. Thank you.
Gracias. No puede enviar eso por email? Can you please send us that information through email so that we can have it? Thank you.
Laura Baldwin, Westfield, Mass. I had asked the council how the Bethlehem House ordinance began in June, and the counselor said they are doing this in California and Oregon. It was reported in the Gazette that Planned Parenthood first contacted the mayor and then the same counselor. Counselor, you did not disclose the truth. I believe that violates your oath of office. Counselors are here to represent the citizens of East Hampton, not wealthy big businesses like Planned Parenthood. Citizens voted for you and not to push an agenda. Look what happened to Bethlehem House after the ordinance was pushed. Bethlehem House was vandalized, and there are costs to repair it. Volunteers' lives were threatened. This hate crime was unnecessary. I asked why you would want to create division against a selfless charity. Please, councilmen, protect your people and the charities within this city. Whether you agree with them or not, that is your duty. Your longtime taxpaying citizens deserve your respect as it is their dollars that have supported this city over many years. Hidden agendas and pet projects don't belong in City Hall. You are a public servant. If you are not tolerant of all and treat all equally, especially with those you don't agree with, there is no equity nor inclusion, which the mayor said she wanted. I hope equity and inclusion are not just buzzwords for agendas, but that they are words of truth from one's own heart. Integrity is the greatest form of wealth. If you lose it, you will have a hard time ever getting it back again. I tell you this not in anger, but in truth. A friend will tell you the truth. I repeat an ancient proverb, better are the wounds of a friend than the kisses of an enemy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone that is participating remote? Julie?
Hi, this is Julie in Precinct 1. I just wanted to give a big thank you to those counselors who had voted yes for the two electric vehicles for EPD. I didn't know if you're aware of this, but last month, East Hampton made the list from the Environmental Massachusetts Research and Policy Center for renewable energy. So, and I just wanted to say thank you, and it shows your commitment to our environment for a better future for all, and I look forward to your continual transition of other department vehicles from fossil fuel to clean energy. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. Go ahead, Jean.
Hi, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm on a new thing right now. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I just wanted to say that previously, one of the counselors maintained that, in general, you're saying that the ordinance was not about the content and that it had to do more with consumer protection. But I want to urge the city council to withdraw the ordinance because if this is truly about consumer protection, then why not apply this ordinance to all the relevant organizations, including Planned Parenthood? You're targeting a faith-based charity in the community that is doing good, and it doesn't seem that... You're saying that if you are really against discrimination, don't discriminate against people whose views do not naturally align with yours. You're the city council, you're representing all the citizens. So please don't discriminate just against the people whose opinions you don't agree with. That wouldn't be very tolerant, would it? So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
I urge you to withdraw the ordinance.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Communication for elected officials, words, and committee. Any counselor have anything, Counselor Rist?
I just wanted to say to all of our Puerto Rican residents, including our president, that we in the city of East Hampton, I'm sure the council really, our heart goes out to you once again being struck by a hurricane. Our president's family lives there and has been affected by this again, and I think, given that it is Spanish Heritage Month, we should all be thinking, and if we pray, pray a lot for Puerto Rico. They don't deserve this, and I hope the federal government will give them anything they need. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. Any other counselor? Counselor Zerret?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few quick announcements. Just wanted to echo what was just said, recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month and just recognizing that we fly many flags over the city in recognition of many events, and I hope next year that we see the appropriate flag and symbolism of this month. The Children's Advocacy Center is having an open house. I don't know if the counselors got an email about that. That's October 6th from 3:30 to 6:00 PM. This is a very valuable resource within Hampshire County that addresses victims of child abuse and domestic violence. That is a day of a council meeting, but there might be some room to make it to the open house beforehand. And then, wearing many hats in the city, I guess in this case, Yarmulke, I just wanted to acknowledge for everybody who observes and just to create some transparency that the Jewish High Holidays are upon us. The Jewish New Year, which is Rosh Hashanah, 9/26 and 9/27, that's next Monday and Tuesday. It starts on sundown on Sunday. And then the Day of Atonement, Yom Kippur, is October 5th. And just to thank the council again for the members who were willing to create space for members of the Jewish community, recognizing specifically that that day would be difficult for members of our Jewish community to be able to attend meetings. It's always a reflective time for the community in general, certainly is for myself as well as a member of the community. With the New Year, it's a time of joy, and then with the Day of Atonement, it's a time of reflection. It's a time to accept and offer apologies, what we call tishuvah, which is repentance or returning to broken relationships, tzedakah, charity, and tikun olam, which is repair of the world, which, all of which I think in the secular world are things to embrace as well. So again, thank you to the council for moving that. And then I just want to briefly recognize what happened recently in Martha's Vineyard with innocent people who were seeking asylum, not here illegally, but seeking asylum from Venezuela and were moved from Texas by the actions of a politician in Florida, being used as pawns in a political scheme. And we have to recognize that these are human beings, they're not pawns. And certainly, I will say for myself, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but if those individuals were to have landed here in East Hampton, I would certainly welcome them with open arms and provide them the shelter and support and love that they need and treat them as human beings. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselor? Seeing none. Mayor's communication? Other mayor? Do you have something? No. Correspondents for the Vice President and Vice President, first I want to, we have something that I'm going to let Counselor Rist read, but at first I want to say thank you, Counselor Rist, for those words about Puerto Rico. But it's not just Puerto Rico, it's Dominican Republic and Mexico have, and Mexico have an earthquake two days ago too. Please think about them, especially this month that is Hispanic Heritage Month. Our community is huge here with the good stuff in this country, and please keep them and keep my family in your tough and pray. Thank you, Counselor Rist.
Taking Vice President Derby's place, I am announcing for the public Harvest Fest 2022. It is free, good price. Sunday, October 9th, Nanotuck Park, One Daly Field Road, East Hampton. 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, there's a bonfire, and the bonfire ends around 6:00 PM. The group Roger Salome is playing. It's at the Rotary Club Pavilion Number 4, 2:30 to 4:00 PM, and I think that's when the band is playing. Food and drink is available, so Harvest Fest 2022, that's the announcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Derby, do you have anything?
No, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Derby. At 6:14, I will take a motion to open a public hearing.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second to open a public hearing. Marianne.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Please say hi.
Dave Munier.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Owen Zerret.
Hi.
Motion passes. First, we have some transfer. Counselor Rist?
Yes, these are all fairly easy transfers, counselors, end of year things. The first is an interdepartmental transfer of $1,760 from the reserve fund. This is to sew up the budget for the city council clerk, our city council clerk. As you recall, we budgeted 5,000, but it was underfunded in the budget and was resolved with the mayor following that. So this is to cover that shortfall. This makes the clerk's salary $5,000. Finance Committee approved it 3 to 0.
Any counselor have any questions or comment about this? Seeing none. Anyone from the public have any question or comment about this transfer? Seeing none. Counselor Rist?
I will move that the full council approve an interdepartmental transfer. The amount requested is $1,760 to be transferred from the reserve fund, $1,760, to be transferred to the city council permanent clerical account, $1,760, for the purpose of providing fiscal year '23 balance of funding for the council clerk's salary. Second.
We have a motion and a second for interdepartmental transfer of $1,760 to provide the fiscal year '23 balance of funding to the city council clerk's salary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Marianne.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Dave Munier.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Owen Zerret.
Hi.
Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
Hi.
I'm sorry. We miss you. Sorry. She say hi too. Motion passes.
I'm not used to that. Got to go back.
We apologize for that.
No, I'm good.
The next interdepartmental transfer is an old bill. We frequently get these at the end of the fiscal year when bills are checked by our auditor, and this is a minor bill that was, needs to be covered for legal, legal needs from Clifford and Kenny, which is our labor attorney. So the amount is $902.50 from the reserve fund to cover this old bill. Finance Committee approved it 3 to 0.
Any counselor have any question or comment about this appropriation? Seeing no. Anyone from the public have any comment or question? Seeing none. Counselor Rist?
I move that the full council approve an interdepartmental transfer. The amount requested is $902.50 to be transferred from the reserve fund, $902.50, to be transferred to the mayor's legal account, $902.50, for the purpose for covering an FY22 legal bill from Clifford and Kenny after year-end close.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for interdepartmental transfer of $902.50. It's an old bill to recover the fiscal year '22 legal bill received after year-end close. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Marianne.
Connie.
Hi.
Salem.
Hi.
Omar.
Hi.
JP.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Brad.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Owen.
Hi.
Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
We have another interdepartmental transfer. We do this every quarter. It's the PEG Access, the money coming in and the money going out, which is coming from Charter, it funds East Hampton Media. We ask this question, we have to do it every quarter because we have to make sure there's enough money in the account for it to be paid out, and we don't get it in at regular intervals. So we have to have a quarterly payment. You'll see the same thing in another quarter. So the amount is $54,267. We get that from the PEG Access revenue account, and it's going back out into the PEG Access expense account. Also approved 3 to 0.
Any city councilor have any question or comment about this? Seeing no. Anyone from the public have any comment or questions about this one? Seeing none. Counselor Rist?
I move that the full council approve an interdepartmental transfer. The amount requested is $54,267.91 to be transferred from the PEG Access account, revenue account, $54,267.91, to be transferred to the PEG Access expense account, $54,267.91, for the purpose of giving approval to spend from PEG Access receipts reserved account for cable-related purposes, consistent with the franchise agreement.
We have a motion and a second for interdepartmental transfer of $54,267.91 transferred to the PEG Access account for the cable-related purpose. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Marianne.
Connie.
Hi.
Salem.
Hi.
Omar.
Hi.
JP.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Brad.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Owen.
Hi.
Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
Finally, we have a supplemental appropriation request. This is from the CPA. We all voted $3.25 million at the last meeting for the city space project. In that project was, we also approved in that motion, the 3.1.25 million to come from other funds. Those funds are that which is reserved in the CPA account for the Old Town Hall second floor project, currently a little less than $1 million. This 255 needs to be transferred into that reserve account to cover the 1.25 million. So this is basically accounting for the motion we already approved, and I felt we should do it anyway, even though it was in that motion, to make sure that it's legal. So this supplemental appropriation is just making sure that we follow anything that might occur in the account, to put the money in that account when we are able to move it to construction. Oh, and we passed it 3 to 0. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any counselor have any question or comment? Counselor Riley?
So just to clarify, are we doing this as a one-time thing to make it whole, or is this going to be periodic payments until the total amount is?
No, there is already $904,000 in there. We need to make it 1.25 million, which is what the council voted on. And this formally takes it out of the Historic Resources account and the reserve fund. So there's a reason to do it, so we can pick which funds we wanted to have it removed from to permanently put it in the reserve account. And I shouldn't use the word permanent. We could always move it out should the project, God forbid, not happen. Okay?
Yep. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Seeing no. Anyone from the public have any comment or question about this appropriation? Seeing none. Counselor Rist?
I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation request from the Community Preservation Act. The amount requested is $255,576 to be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Historic Resources account, $208,000, and the CPA Reserve Fund account, $47,576, for a total of $255,576 to be appropriated to the Old Town Hall second-floor construction retained city match, $255,576 for the purpose of CPA savings account for construction phase 2, restoration of second-floor auditorium, and construction of the new ADA accessible entrance and elevator.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation from CPA funds, $255,576 from CPA seven account for the Old Town Hall construction phase 2. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Marianne.
Connie.
Hi.
Salem.
Hi.
Omar.
Hi.
JP.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Brad.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Owen.
Hi.
Motion passes. Counselor Kuzinski?
Mr. President, I'd like to be able to share my screen for this discussion of the reuse of the three schools. Would you allow me to do so?
I will allow you to do so if it is related to something that we discussed at the committee, if it is something that is not what's in the package. I'm concerned that is openly illegal violation because no of the counselors saw it before. But if it is part of what we work on the committee, I'm okay with that.
I believe it was, it qualifies as what we discussed at the committee.
Okay. Do you have the access to do it, like to share something?
He has to be a host. Let me see.
You do it.
Yeah, I will do it now.
Is there a way to turn the volume up?
Yes. That room. Let me see where it's being.
Would JP be here?
Okay, I got it. He's sharing the...
Does that show?
Yes.
Ah, excellent. So we should see East Hampton's public heritage?
Yes.
Excuse me, Counselor Kuzinski. Other counselor can hear him really well?
I can hear him all right. It's a little low, but...
Okay.
Let me see if I can turn the volume up just a bit, and I'll try to speak louder. Is that a bit better?
Yeah, I can hear.
It isn't every day that we get the opportunity to discuss three buildings with 100-year-old histories and be able to acknowledge the heritage that we have inherited, the Maple Street School, the Center Street School, and the Pepin Street School. Now, with all due respect to the mayor, the mayor doesn't own these properties. With all due respect to my fellow counselors, none of us, myself included, own these properties. And with all respect to any city departments, no department or department had owned these properties. If you take a trip to the registry of deeds, the records show that the inhabitants of the city of East Hampton own these properties. So, Massachusetts law requires that whenever the inhabitants create a request for proposal, that is an RFP to dispose of the property, that RFP is an agreed-upon joint process between the mayor and the city council, and there's a reason for this. And that reason is to assure that all of the inhabitants have input into the process. Now, from my perspective and in my opinion, ideally, this process should be joint and collaborative from start to finish and include the mayor and any and all counselors so that all the inhabitants participate and feel free and comfortable to make their wishes known. Now, as we know, the mayor appointed a committee to study the matter, and that went on for quite some time, and handed the council a report to approve. It should come as, I was surprised that the council wanted to hear for itself from the We heard directly from the constituents, and this is what we found. We found that in addition to having affordable housing in this community, the community wants interactions, community interactions. And we heard very clearly that the community wants to save the gym at the Pepin School. The community recognizes that both the gym and the auditorium, complete with the stage and lighting systems, are indeed gems of the community. We found that there already is an elevator in place and that we could never afford to build them again. We all know how important exercise is for all ages, for all groups of people, and studies have shown that neighborhood recreation facilities and facility membership are jointly associated with physical activity. And an open access to these facilities is vital to promoting a healthy community. In fact, for some of us, we'd like to see a health and wellness community activity center as part of the overall package, if that's possible. Point of order.
Point of order, may I speak? As a parliamentary, and I have to object to this presentation, because it is not a presentation from the Property Committee, it is the personal opinion of its chair. And a presentation which the rest of us did not have an opportunity to review nor rebut is being presented to the council. I believe it's an open meeting law violation, and I must ask the president to not allow it. You are certainly entitled to your opinion, which you're giving. But a presentation, what you're doing, a written presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, does not allow the public to rebut, having not been put in the package prior to that. And it's an opinion. This is a Property Committee report. Did the Property Committee present this?
Counselor Rist, uh, does well take it. Um, Counselor Kozinski, please, um, keep your comments about what happened at the meetings. And I, I think you're gonna have the opportunity at the end to give us your opinion about what you think about the RFP. But it is, this not the report from the committee. The committee report is something different. Can you please state your comment about the RFP that we have in front of us and, uh, at the public hearing that is coming in front of the people too?
Sure. Uh, I, we, we discussed using the facility as for various purposes. And at the committee level, we discussed that parking is available, be available at three, all three properties if possible. We also discussed that, uh, the possibility of having an outdoor recreational playground in space. These areas also encourage community interaction and serve as gathering places in the neighborhood. We talked about buildings and reviewed the appraisals. And the, as is appraisal of Pepin is six hundred thousand dollars. It does not include any, as livable space in any of the calculations of the first floor.
Counselor Kozinski, I have to stop you again, because I think it's not, I think it's not, this is not part of the RFP that we published on the agenda to discuss with the public.
Well, we're discussing the RFP, and I'm saying that all of these things are included in the RFP.
Point of order, Mr. President.
I believe that the RFP offers the community an opportunity to allow developers the opportunity to respond and contribute to the community's needs and come up with a plan for affordable housing.
Counselor Kozinski, one more time, we on the agenda, we present for the public an RFP. That that is what we have for the public hearing. It's four motions there that we presented on the agenda, and we should keep the, the comment about your, the RFP that we have on the agenda. I think we are going in the wrong direction, and if that keep going, I will limit you to talk, and I'm gonna allow you to talk. Please keep your comment about the RFP that we have in front of us that was submitted to the public, because that's the only thing that the public have.
The RFP is available for review, and my point was that all of the things that we're talking about are in the RFP. I think we've created a good RFP that enables, uh, developers to go forward and come up with a plan for the city that is beneficial in terms of affordable housing. It is beneficial in terms of, uh, addressing community needs. I would ask that Emily, if you're with us, could go through the specifics of the individual items? And if I'm mistaken in any way, Emily, in interpreting that it would be the, uh, developers' opportunity to respond to the community, and it would be entirely up to them, what they present and how they, please correct. Emily, are you available?
Emily's re here, but I'm gonna remind you that I'm the City Council President, and I'm the one that I'm gonna recognize some people. Uh, I'm gonna allow Emily to do a presentation. Emily's gonna do a presentation about the RFP and the changes that we did at the Property Committee, and then I'm gonna allow the counselors to make question about the RFP. Emily?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Is that going out too?
Can you all see that?
Yeah, but does the public see that?
Um, the people, they're participating remote. They can see the presentation?
They should be able to. Uh, Mr. President, I shared my screen as well.
Okay. Can you please share? We, I cannot see it here. So look like you're not.
Try one more time.
Are you, are you a host? Is she a host?
Says that I am sharing my, let me just cancel and try again.
Wouldn't it be beneficial for me to take these lights down so there's less...
It's not allowing me to share that it's grayed out, so you need to do something.
Let me look for you here. I'll make you a co-host.
I believe...
Yeah, it's right here.
Yeah.
Can you do it now?
You weren't a host.
It is still grayed out. Let me just give it one more moment to...
We have a light show. There you go. That's good.
No, I'm still grayed out.
That's sad, because we tried before our work.
I know. It worked before, Mr. President.
And now you're the host.
You know what? You might have to turn that camera off and then turn it back on again.
For that laptop?
Not reboot the laptop, but I could sign out if I need to sign back in again.
Let me ask if the people from East Hampton Media with the camera that we have, that they have, they can project the other TV, and then people can see it?
That could potentially work. Do you want to try that first?
Yes, I'm waiting to see if the people from East Hampton Media can do that instead of showing us showing that TV. Because there's a camera behind you that I think they, they can control.
Mr. President, I'm waiting. May I?
Uh, Counselor...
As clerk of the Property Committee, I just wanted to make sure that you are satisfied with the explanation to the public of the Property Committee's process thus far prior to this, um, presentation. If you, if you feel the public needs more clarification about the process that we went through?
Yeah, let me do the presentation, and then we, we can, yeah, they got it.
They've got it, so you can present.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you, East Hampton Media. Let, let, uh, Emily to do the presentation, and then we'll allow you to do it. Emily?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Counselors, can everybody hear me? Uh, if you can't at any point, just wave your hands or say something.
It's better if you just talk to the council.
I just want to make sure that everybody can hear the voice. So, uh, thank you for having me. My name is Emily Innis. Um, I am a consulting urban planner and designer. Uh, I am the consultant working for the city and helping to, um, uh, work through the process and also prepare the materials, including the draft RFP that came to you, the city counselors, um, uh, and then went to the Property Committee for further review and, um, thought. I want to touch very briefly, I know this is in your packet, so I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, because there's a lot of text in there, but I do want to touch very briefly on a couple of important points. One is that the RFP did not come out of nowhere. Back in 2020, uh, the city did a downtown strategic plan that was approved in March of 2020. There was, uh, an extensive, uh, chapter and extensive public input in looking at what could happen with three schools. It was known at the time of this study that they would become available for some other use. And the second thing that happened, um, that led into the discussions that the committee had on how to prepare an RFP and what the content should be, is the East Hampton Housing Production Plan. And that rel, really led to the understanding among committee members that there was a need for affordable housing. So the two, uh, planning processes that happened prior to the development of this RFP really fed into that. As Counselor noted earlier, there was a timeline in which a committee was working to put together a draft RFP that would be submitted to city council for its review. That happened, and, uh, we moved forward with the Property Committee to make some changes. And it's really those changes that I want to talk about tonight. So I believe this is online, and everybody can go through. Now, one of those changes was originally, the focus of the goals was the affordable housing, the flexibility of the RFP, and then the community values. And that really switched a little bit, so that the community values bumped up from being third on the list to being second on the list, and that was really the discussion around Pepin Gym and the cafeteria and auditorium, um, made that so much more important in this discussion. With that, uh, there were two rounds of changes that the Property Committee did. Uh, the first one was from its meetings over the summer. We made a set of, uh, changes on the, right before the nine-eight meeting of the Property Committee. Um, and that was adding text to address the potential community use of the Pepin Gym and the auditorium cafatory, cafeteria. Um, and there, from that one change, there flowed through a couple of other changes. So that changed the description of community values and concerns around Pepin itself, um, and making sure that any developer responding to this understood that importance. It then flowed into the development goals with the idea that, uh, there might be an opportunity for a developer responding to enter into a potential public-private partnership with the city to retain the use of the space. From there, it then flowed into the requirements that a developer has to meet when they submit the proposal. And what that means is that there's a section in there that says, if you are making a proposal to the city that says, um, we'd like to include the Pepin Gym and Cafeteria space, then, uh, we're going to ask you to give the city certain information about what are they, what is the city giving up in terms of affordable housing in order to do that? And what are the requirements for the city in terms of other resources that they might have to put towards the partnership? So that was an important change. And then from there, we had to reprioritize the criteria, reorder the criteria in order to account for that. And so that has become the second item. First is affordable housing, second is that. Uh, we had a few additional changes, uh, after the nine-fourteen, the September fourteenth meeting. Those were relatively minor, some terminology changes. But the main one was the, uh, initial changes right before the nine-eight meeting. So the, you'll have in your packet, obviously, the revised criteria, why they were important and the order that they're now in. Um, and then finally, the final item in your packet is the post-approval of this RFP, responsibilities on the city's side, and also, um, the process for how that happens.
One second. Can you please mute yourself, your, um, participating remote? I'm sorry.
Not a problem. You get, you get all sorts of different interruptions. So just, uh, I was flipping through the RFP criteria. And just, again, for people at home who might be watching this, I know you have it in your packet.
And I'm not sure anybody can hear me.
There's also the post-approval rules, um, uh, so that people understand what the process is after tonight, uh, depending, obviously, on the city council's vote.
Point of information, I, I wasn't able to hear once the call...
Okay, can you repeat, like, know everything, but can you please repeat a lot of stuff? Because the counselor at home couldn't hear you. Because that was, looked like some people was talking at the same...
Because of that? All right. Why don't I go back to the changes then? Not a problem. So again, the changes, the, the changes from, uh, the Property Committee meetings over the summer to, uh, right before their nine, their September eighth meeting, those were the most critical changes. And those changes were to really bring forward the idea of the use of the, uh, potential use of the Pepin Gym and/or the auditorium cafeteria as part of the RFP. So that when developers look at the RFP, they say, okay, we see here that that is an important space for the community. We see in this next section that, uh, one of the requirements, uh, may be the, to keep those. That, that is a possibility that we, the developers, can consider. Um, and then in the next section, it's, these are the things that we need to tell the city if we are proposing, uh, that, that be retained as potential community space. And so the first thing they need to say is, what is the, um, lost opportunity for affordable housing? And the second thing they need to say are what city or which city resources are required in order to turn that space into a community space. Um, and the reason for that is because there are some physical changes that would have to be made to the building, and there's probably monetary changes, including whether or not the city would be leasing the space, and a whole list of other things. That's for the developer to tell the city. And the idea behind that, just to, to clarify a little bit from what I said earlier, is to make sure that when you, um, as a complete city, when the proposals are reviewed and the evaluation is done, that there's an apples-to-apples comparison of understanding which developers are proposing what, and that you have the information you need to make an informed decision about the future use of that space, knowing what the costs are and knowing what the benefits are. So that was the prime change right before the nine-eight meeting. We had two meetings, nine-eight and nine-fourteen. There were some smaller changes, mostly to, um, uh, change some terminology. And, uh, that's the RFP that you have in front of you today is post those changes from nine-fourteen. I will say that, uh, the other thing that changed, uh, and I alluded to this earlier, is that bringing that Pepin Gym, Auditorium Cafeteria up in the priority list meant that we reshuffled some of the other priorities. We also made it a little bit clearer what the difference was for, for, um, a developer who is proposing to retain one or more of the buildings versus a developer who is proposing to do new development. Um, and that there are additional criteria that are required for that. So that's all been clarified. And that's outlined, really, all the text after the changes, is just showing you what the new criteria are and why those criteria are in there. And then you have the final timeline at the end.
Okay. Counselor Kozinski, do you want to add something, uh, to what happened at the committee and the RFP?
Absolutely. I'd, uh, like to thank the, uh, folks who put together the mayor's, uh, proposal. Uh, I think it was very comprehensive, and everyone who participated in the entire process. I'd like to say that the Property Committee, after spending the summer reviewing this, it recommends three to zero, the, uh, RFP as written. It does not contain any requirements about price. It does not contain requirements, uh, about definitely keeping the gym or the cafeteria, auditorium. It leaves open fully the proposal to the developers to come to us. And my understanding is, once the mayor reviews the, uh, report from the, the RFPs, that the mayor will present to the council of, uh, final disposition of the products. Or will, uh, think about a plan. Perhaps another member of the committee would like to say something else to add? I would be amenable to that if you are, Mr. President.
Counselor, sorry, you want to add something?
Uh, just to say that once I heard the consultant, and thank you for all your work on this, once I heard the consultant's report, I think that accurately summarized the process that I experienced in the committee, um, so I don't, I don't need to be redundant.
That being, I said, thank you, Mr. President. I would be prepared to present a motion after we have public discussion.
Yeah, uh, any counselor have any question? Counselor, um, Rist?
Thank you, Emily, for your presentation. I was prepared, uh, to vote against this RFP. Had it not had that, uh, I guess the possibility or the requirement that the developer present what would happen if he saved the gym and the auditorium, how many affordable housing units would be lost? And that the flexibility, and I thank the Property Committee, that the mayor has in choosing something that is proposed, uh, by looking at how many affordable housing units would be lost if we decide to save the gym, if we decide to save the auditorium. So I am, I am... So I am, I am happy that that was not a requirement presented because it would require me to amend it because I would not agree to that. But I feel very comfortable now with this, with this proposal, Property Committee, because it does allow the mayor the flexibility to look at these. I'm not sure I agree with raising the level of the housing, I mean, the gym and the auditorium from wherever it was to number two, but I'm sure that the Property Committee recognizes that affordable housing, affordable housing, that's the biggest, biggest thing we need to ask for with development. So I thank you for that, and I'm glad I don't have to rebut the proposal. I'm ready to vote for it as it stands. Thank you.
Counselor Riley?
Yes, I guess I kind of have a couple of questions mixed into one here. So let's say we receive a proposal from a developer to keep the Pep and Gym and the auditorium. Now, it sounds like from what you were saying is that there would have to be some kind of an arbitration process on what the incurred costs would be to have the city share some of that space and to have a developer share the rest. Is that correct?
With your permission?
Yeah, sorry.
So the way the RFP has set it up is that there is the potential, if the developer presents a proposal that says, yes, we will keep one or both of these spaces available for city use, that there is the potential for the city to come back and say, we agree that we would like to use those spaces, and we will negotiate what that means. It doesn't, in the RFP itself, I mentioned that flexibility was a key issue, especially in this competitive environment for development. So it doesn't require the city to enter into any agreement, and it doesn't require the developer to, as Counselor Rist said, that they must present this as a proposal. So to, to answer your question, that the city's not obligated to do anything, but the developer has to provide sufficient information to the city that it would know where, what types of obligations it would have to have if this were to be retained.
And so then the second part of that question then is, so it's my understanding that once the RFP moves from this process, it, it then goes out, we start to receive, ideally we receive proposals. Then the selection committee starts to grade these proposals. So let's say that this is a situation that takes place. At what point does the, is it the mayor that has sole discretion to decide whether we keep those properties? Or would she be able to say, that sounds good, but it's not an okay cost, so let's keep it as affordable housing? You know what I mean? Where does that kind of authority exist in this process? I just need to understand, you know, because I, what I would hate to see happen is we select a proposal and then at the end stage, there is some kind of discrepancy that can't be resolved. So if you can, if she can answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you. That is an excellent question. And so there's, there's a couple of other pieces that come into the process. The, really, voting on the RFP is not a final stage, it's opening up a new stage. So the other two components that come into this are the weighting criteria. So all of those evaluation components, the evaluation criteria, can have certain weights assigned to them. And the Property Committee had an example of how that could work. It is by no means the final one. So that's, first of all, how the proposals are weighted against each other and how the weightings fall in each of the categories is still to be discussed. And because of the length of time it takes for the RFP to go out, for the developers to assemble the proposals, and for those to come back, there is still time for that discussion to happen. You do not put the weighting criteria into the RFP. The second part is the interview process. So the interview questions still need to be determined. Then there is an evaluation criteria. I think we changed the terminology from when the, the original committee was working on it. The evaluation committee ranks the proposals against the weightings, and then also conducts the interviews using the, the questions, ranks those, and then comes up with a preferred developer recommendation to city council. At that point, will depend, obviously, on what that preferred developer has, has come forward with, but I would anticipate that there is a citywide, and by that I mean both jurisdictions of mayor and city council, discussion of what those components have been. Because the acceptance as a preferred developer does not mean that a contract is signed immediately. There's going to still be a negotiation process at that point.
Okay. And that, and that is when the mayor would be able to negotiate those?
I would assume, yes.
Thank you, Counselor Riley.
Thank you.
Any other counselor before we go to the public? Counselor Rist, and then Counselor.
Just a clarification. I believe after the review committee reviews and the mayor reviews this, the proposals, a proposal is selected, or maybe there's three because there's three different ones for three different schools, whatever. The city council.
Yes, yes.
Has the final vote on that.
I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear. The recommendation comes to the city council at that point.
We have the final vote. Now, we may, we, we certainly will be interacting along the way, but once we make that final decision, we could say no, we, 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 we could reject it. But there will be a committee involved. It's not just the mayor, just so everybody knows that. It's not going to be one person's decision what to present to us.
That is absolutely.
I wanted everybody to know that. Because I believe a committee is being thought of, and there's also going to be a lot of involvement by counselors and the public, so.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. By the way, that's in page twenty-eight of the RFP. Counselor.
Page twenty-eight is pretty good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Just to, just to summarize, I think some of this may have been said, so forgive me if I'm being rhetorical here, but you just criteria. So what, I feel that certainly the, the information gathering process that happened with all of the community input, and then what happened with the working group that was formed by the mayor, and then subsequently what was done by the Property Committee was to take into consideration all of the, the needs, certainly the needs, we're talking a lot about affordable housing, but then the desires, and to some degree the needs as well of the community. So we're all aware, after having had the discussion recently about the Housing Production Plan, of the needing, the need for more housing in general, whether that be affordable or workforce or whatever in the city, we need to produce more housing units. But there, there also was a recognition and sensitivity to community needs expressed to preserve spaces that have been historically used, specifically the Pep and Gym. I feel, this is my opinion to slightly lesser degree, the, the auditorium and the cafeteria in Pep and, but we wanted to be sensitive to all of the, the requests that were, were coming in and make sure that that was reflected here in the RFP. And, and I also do appreciate what the committee did was they separated out sort of major and minor criteria in terms of public access, i.e., criteria two with retaining the Pep and Gym or Cafeteria, and then minor community connections, which are kind of more general, i.e., public parking, which is a big issue, you know, maintaining neighborhood playgrounds and parks, and then, you know, generalized indoor/outdoor community space or whatever. A developer could theoretically come back and not have, and you, I could be correct if I'm wrong, not meet any of these criteria, and then get a big fat zero for that. I think the consultant also pointed out that these are, or will be appropriately weighted too, so, so more important criteria such as housing, and then probably to a lesser degree, retention of valued community resources will be weighted higher than, than other things. I think those are the bigger things. I mean, I feel that we know the importance and need for, for housing in the city, affordable and otherwise, but also when you're creating, when you're, when you're reusing space, obviously you need to take into consideration the community at large. And when you're creating space for new people, i.e., new residents, you need to make sure that you're either preserving or creating spaces for people to congregate and recreate. And so I think that the RFP as it stands now is also thoughtful in that aspect, in that it takes into the, to account the need for spaces for people who either will live in these spaces or will live adjacent to or want to use these spaces. So I just, I just wanted to make that clear, that's all.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselor before I open it to the public? Saying none, I will let the public to participate. I will encourage the counselors to take note. Probably it's going to be a lot of questions, a lot, a lot of concerns still with the RFP. And I'm going to let everybody to talk. We're going to take the notes, and then we're going to ask those questions to the, to the group, Emily, to Jeff if necessary, Michael Owen that is here, work for the city, and the mayor. But now I'm going to open for the public. You're going to have three minutes.
My apologies, Mr. President.
Sorry, Counselor Kozinski?
Yep, Mr. President. Point, point of information, did, did Emily talk about number eleven being dropped from the proposal that was timing? I didn't hear that. I may have missed it. I apologize.
Emily? Do you want to cover that before we go to the public?
Happy, happy to, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor. So between the nine eight meeting and the nine fourteen meeting, some of the counselors' questions in the Property Committee had been about the criteria that establish the developer's ability to actually do the project, right? It's, it's one thing for them to come in and say, we're going to do wonderful things for the city. It's quite another thing for them to actually do that. So the criteria at the end are about financial stability, about their, their, their ability to have actually done some of this in the past, similar types of construction. And one of the questions that the, the counselors had come up with had led me to split two of the criteria around the scheduling and the timing of the project that I showed them at the nine eight meeting. It was decided by the counselors after the nine fourteen, or at the nine fourteen meeting, that we would remove what was called number eleven, and that was to do with how long it took to get the project to a certificate of occupancy. And the feeling being that almost every project over the last few years has had significant delays, so it wasn't really a fair criteria to put in, which I agreed with, having seen that in any number of proposals and kind of wondering where that's coming from these days. So, so we removed that, but we did leave in the criteria about how long the developer would expect the city to keep the buildings under city control and therefore city responsibility for costs. So in that case, the shorter that period, the more highly advantageous it is to the developer because it gets the costs onto the developer's side and not the city's.
Thank you. Now I'm going to open to the public. I'm going to allow you to address your comment or question to the council. Please just talk to the council. You're going to have three minutes, and it's only related to this RFP that is about the three school buildings.
Thank you.
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
I remember this part.
Yes.
Joe McCoy, eleven Clap Street. Thank you very much for this opportunity. It's great to see you all, and I can now honestly say this, thank you for your service because I know what it takes. But I was, I was the chair of the Mayor Advisory Committee, and I was really glad to hear about that kind of approach because my first experience on city council was with an RFP. And quite honestly, as part of the Property Committee, I don't think we really knew exactly what we're going to do, and, and I think we were very kind of rigid, and we needed to be this, and we need to be that, and then it was years and years and never went anywhere. And so I was really glad when the mayor, you know, had acquired with me if I'd be interested beyond this advisory committee, especially with Emily involved, because I realized, as she has mentioned several times, the flexibility and the practicality of what an RFP needs to be. And she has a wealth of knowledge that we didn't, you know. I remember at the meetings, she was able to show, okay, Adams, this RFP worked. Amers, this one didn't. And then ultimately, we have to find that fine line between what is good for our community and what will work, what will entice developer to be able to proceed with these projects. So I think it was a wonderful ability to have Emily involved. The committee itself, I think, was also a broad group of people, and everything from artists to business people to me with some, you know, city politics, government experience. So I think that brought a real diverse approach to it, as well as accumulating data from the downtown committee, as well as affordable, fair housing, all that data, I think, was a nice way to kind of get a feel what's going on. I don't want the committee to ever feel that we had the rule, the goal of observing by any means. Matter of fact, I think from day one, I kept on saying to Jeff, you know, you do know this is the city council's decision, you do know. But it was not, we felt, you really couldn't take up your time while it was not in front of the city council. So this was a way for us to do some of the legwork, to put some of the data, to use Emily's expertise, and to help give something for you to, to, to improve on. And I think the process worked. I mean, at times, yes, it's, it's contentious and it's clumsy, but, you know, there was some information given to you guys, you went through it, you had more public input, and I think from what I'm gathering, you came up with a document that most everybody is, is comfortable with. Yes, this gives us our goal of achieving affordable housing, but also gives us the flexibility to negotiate community. So I think, I think the process has worked, and so I, I hope you all vote in favor of the RFP. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Janet Tatro, and I'm the chair of the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership. I live at fifty-two Pomeroy Street. I am here tonight to speak in favor of the school reuse RFP. I want to thank the School Reuse Committee and the Planning Department for their leadership on this, and I want to thank the Property Committee for its thoughtful consideration of the RFP and for bringing it back to the full council for a vote tonight. The City of East Hampton needs affordable housing. According to our 2021 Housing Production Plan, we must produce thirty-eight units of affordable housing annually to reach our ten percent affordability threshold set by the state. The opportunity, opportunity that the city has before it to use city-owned buildings to create affordable housing is rare. Most of the time, we are subject to other entities, developers, private landowners, to help us accomplish our affordable housing goals. In this case, the city is in the driver's seat and has the ability to make something happen, and we have a responsibility to take the fullest advantage of the opportunity before us. I trust that the council understands that we need affordable housing. I have been before you many times to talk about this. So I want to limit my comments to two areas that I think need special attention in order for this RFP to achieve its goal of producing affordable housing. All three buildings, Maple Center and Pep and, must remain part of this RFP. You will likely hear tonight from community members who want to maintain portions of Pep and for community space. And you may feel compelled to then reconsider disposing of Pep and for affordable housing, and I think that would be a mistake. The RFP, as Emily has explained to us, includes provisions that allow the developer to retain portions of Pep and, most notably the gym and/or the auditorium, and gives additional points to developers who choose to do that. But our main objective is affordable housing, and we need all three buildings as part of the RFP to make a project feasible for an affordable housing developer. Removing Pep and or adding provisions that may require the developer to retain the gym could make the project economically unfeasible and could result in receiving no proposals. My other point is that the council must convey the buildings for a dollar to an affordable housing developer. Council has been provided information about the appraised values of the buildings in order to consider disposing of the buildings for less than market value. These buildings are old with years of deferred maintenance. Housing construction prices are high, and affordable housing developers will not be able to pay for these buildings. Conveying the buildings for a profit to the city will likely make the project, project economically unfeasible and could result in no proposals. The Housing Partnership and I personally are incredibly proud of the efforts the city has taken up until this point to support and create affordable housing. Let's continue this work by voting to approve this RFP as drafted for release. Thank you.
Thank you. Three minutes.
Perfect.
Anyone else?
I didn't expect to be speaking because I've missed a lot. I'm Diane Barowski. I live at thirteen Dewey Street. All this about affordable housing, my, I think part of it should be the community, and I'd like to see senior center over to Pep and. That's my feeling. To have all three buildings for affordable housing. I went today and talked to the city planner, and the places that are going up Ferry Street, any of those affordable housing? I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Somebody said.
Can you please talk to the council?
Okay. Affordable housing, Onkada Street that we built, nice places there, five out of twenty-one? How come there's only five? Was that a contractor that did this and said that he was only going to put five in? Anyways, I, I, I'm just upset that I'm hearing all this about affordable housing. Yes, we need affordable housing. Yes, we need affordable housing, but not to take all three buildings for affordable housing. You know, we seniors and other people that were constituents here, we need to have access. Like my granddaughter says, "Oh, the Peppin School is so close to the library. If they had community activity within one of the schools." I just hate to see all three buildings go to affordable housing. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that want to participate?
Tom Brown. I have a couple of hats I'm going to wear here. One is Economic Development Commission, and the other one is Council on Aging Board Member. First of all, for many years now, EDIC has recognized the need for housing, both available and affordable, as a major component, if not the most important component to economic development. There's very limited housing available and very limited affordable housing available. And that's why we support the RFP in its current format prioritizing affordable housing. You've heard on a couple of occasions, and we heard at the Property Subcommittee meeting about the need for a senior center, and we wholeheartedly agree, but not in an old school. I've been on the Council on Aging Board for 36 years. And in that 36-year period, we've been in four locations. And all four of those locations were in old something. We're currently in the old post office. Not a day goes by that someone doesn't come in looking to buy stamps at the senior center. I for one, and I believe, I can't speak for our board, but we're going to hold out for a new, newly constructed senior center someday in East Hampton. I have said that in 36 years, East Hampton has never had a senior center. We provide senior services in some old building that used to be something else. So I'm fairly certain that the Council on Aging Board is not in favor of moving into an old school. We'll hold out for a new building someday. The last thing I would offer is that, again, at another Property Subcommittee meeting, I use the analogy of going fishing. And I can stand on the shore all day long and wonder what am I catch? And I'll never know until I cast that line in the water. I truly hope that tonight, East Hampton will cast its line. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public that are participating remote?
I'm Marvin Ward, and I live kitty-corner across the street from this building in the Cottage Square Apartments. There's one subsidized apartment in it, I think. Maybe only, maybe two or three. But there are 50 there. But they're all, what you might say, rent-controlled because the builders, the owners, got tax credits. So it's a tax credit project. I think that the keeping of the gymnasium and the auditorium is essential because we don't have any equivalent of either of those facilities in the center of town. And when I first heard about this, that was all going to turn into affordable housing, I thought, "That's ridiculous because how do you build a new auditorium? It's not cheap. How do you build a new gymnasium? It's not cheap." And you have them, and they're good. So this recent change is workable and sensible. I just was thinking, "What are you doing? A cookie cutter thing with schools because we're going to make housing out of all of it? That's nonsense, not when you have that kind of community usable space." And so I'm very glad to see that that has had some impact on the final design. Thank you.
Thank you, Marvin. Anyone else? I know, I saw it. Just waiting for them.
Hello. My name is Tristan Chambers. I live on Clark Street. I am just a random community member who came today to thank you all for considering this proposal and to reiterate something you've probably heard over and over again, that East Hampton is desperately and direly in need of affordable housing. I've met people waiting my table, people on the street who work in East Hampton, but they don't live in East Hampton. And they would like to live in East Hampton where they work because there's nowhere for them to live. There's no affordable housing for them in East Hampton, and it's a huge problem. I'm sure this isn't the first time you've heard it, but I just felt like I should reiterate as a community member on the street my own anecdotal experience and to second this proposal. And thank you all for your diligence in seeing through this project and making sure that it is successful. Not all projects are successful, and it requires an extreme amount of diligence. And I really want to thank you all for your time and energy, as well as yours, for creating this proposal and making sure that it is successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from here before I go to remote? Seeing none. I'm going to apologize if I mispronounce your name. Kayam?
Yeah, hi. I'm Kayam Gemrog McQuade. I live at 14 Clinton Street, East Hampton. I'm a member of the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership and also the coordinator of the East Hampton Housing Coalition. I just want to echo the points made by Janet Tetrow about the importance of this RFP as currently written and how critical it is that we keep all three buildings in the RFP. And again, like the last speaker said, East Hampton is in dire need of affordable housing. If we want our city to stay the amazing community that it is now, we need to actively help preserve our community by letting our residents stay here. So I support the RFP as written, and I thank the City Council for bringing it to the public vote today.
Thank you. Julie?
Hi, thank you, Julie Thomas. I just have a couple of questions. I am very, very limited in my knowledge of a lot of this. So just bear with me for one moment. So I just wanted some clarification on RFPs in regards to affordable housing. I just was wondering, in general, what would the impacts be to city resources and services to support and meet the needs of the increased growth, such as the schools, first responders, and other government agencies? Is there like a plan in place for that? And then lastly, I'm not sure if nonprofits are allowed to submit for RFPs, but if they would be tax-exempt, and if residents were subsidized, what happens if the income and revenue doesn't meet the need for the growth of the services required? Who makes up that shortfall to ensure that when the time comes, services will be maintained to the level of service needed for that growth? So that's all I, questions. I know you guys can't answer me, but if you could tell me how I can get those answers, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. And we're going to ask for you. Leslie?
Hi, I'm Leslie Button. I live at 5 Fox Run in East Hampton. I understand the need for affordable housing and support that. So it will be interesting to hear what the RFP reveals. That said, I want to just remind everyone, I think you're well aware of it, that there are also other community needs. So a couple of people have spoken to the Council on Aging. That is an old building, retrofitted for a need it no longer meets. So there's the over-55 population, but then there's also the youth head start. So I'm not sure if the master plan, I think I heard reference to that earlier, sort of incorporates those things. But if it doesn't, the city really needs to take a hard look at that because there are needs beyond what we're talking about tonight. So I appreciate the effort that's gone into this and all the work that people have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Kayla?
Hi there. My name is Kayla Laurent. I'm a resident of East Hampton. I live at 56 Ferry Street, so right down the street from all the brand-new, beautiful, shiny, expensive developments. And I'm here to kind of just reiterate a lot of what you've heard. I'm very much in support of affordable housing and the RFP as currently written. I truly believe that it accurately reflects our city's current priorities and offers flexibility to developers and our community while respectfully placing affordable housing at the top of that list for obvious reasons. Moving forward with all three schools is critical in making a meaningful impact to the community and in affordable housing units in East Hampton. This RFP could be in our city's best interest to continue lifting our community and especially our disproportionately affected community members that I really ask you to keep in mind, not just our City Council, but also our city's community members, to keep everyone else in mind. So I just would like to thank the council for bringing this out to public vote, or sorry, public mention. And I appreciate everyone for bringing it up and talking about it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. I will give the opportunity to the consuls because this is a really important topic. And vote.
Can I speak? I don't live in East Hampton.
You can, you can speak. Go to, go to, go to, go to. We'll go to the podium and please state us. Say your name and address, and I will give you three minutes. Just wait, wait until you get there.
Okay, I get the mic.
Thank you.
Check, all right. So I guess I'm wondering...
Please name and address for the record.
My name's Aristide Daniele. I live in Southampton. But I own Eenee's Restaurant in East Hampton. So my property, butts the property on Maple Street. So parking's a major concern for my business and a bunch of the businesses on Cottage Street. That's why I came tonight, just to see how that's being addressed. I guess I have a general idea of what the RFP does. My question is the idea of the attractiveness of it, right? So it's the idea of this idea, it has to be all three properties. Has that been already ironed out? Is there an idea of could we possibly carve out? Like, there is already a park at Maple Street School. There already is parking at Maple Street School. Could we carve that property up rather than give them that whole, that whole property? You know, that's really what I was thinking was, you know, there's plenty of parking there. You know, if you get X amount of units, you times it by the number of bedrooms. We allocate that number of parking spaces. Then we carve up that piece of property. We leave the park place in place. And we actually allow for parking for the downtown businesses in East Hampton. Is that actually in there somewhere? I don't know. I haven't seen it yet. But that's just something I'm concerned about.
Thank you.
All right. Sit down now. Are we addressing it? Are we talking about it?
We're going to ask. We're going to ask for you. Anyone else? I will, I will allow the counselors to make questions or comments one more time before we vote. Counselor Peak?
Yeah, I just want to remind my colleagues that we were able to, we recently rezoned the one remaining school that was not in our smart-growth district and also changed up some of the regs in our smart-growth district. City Planner Bag can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that part of being in that smart-growth district is that should we develop, or should affordable housing be developed in that district, there is a payment that comes to the city from the state as a result of that development. I think this is relevant because Julie was asked, I've been asked before, like, by friends and community members about not just this project, but virtually any project of affordable housing. Well, if you get new people coming in, they're going to require services, and our city services are already stretched so thin. Like, how's that going to work? I don't want to stray too far from this just because this isn't exactly related to the RFP, but I guess it sort of is. And I just want to just remind people that we actually did just vote to amend our zoning in a way that potentially, I need to double-check on the details, but my understanding is that the city could be eligible for funds from the state should affordable housing be built in that area. Just a thing to throw out there.
Thank you, Counselor Peak. Counselor Sarret, or Counselor Rist?
Well, I wanted Emily to, what he just said probably answers the question. But can you, did the committee or the reuse committee discuss resources versus growth? And is there, in your mind, is Counselor Peak correct? If we do affordable housing, there is funds coming back to the city from the state that will help us cover those costs?
To the second question, yes. 40R provides a payment from the state. I have not reviewed your specific 40R zoning, but yes, that is, that is part of it. And to the first question, yes, we did. And I am bringing up another document. So you can see here, there's a shortened bitly form. Hopefully, everybody can see this online. That is a link to the city website that has all the information that was gathered for the process. And it includes this FAQ sheet, this fact sheet. And so some of the questions that, I believe it was Julie asked about, what does it mean for, for services and whether or not there's taxes coming in from these buildings are addressed in that, in addition to some other questions. So just to touch on her question, if the developer is a nonprofit, those are still taxable. It's a multifamily, it's still taxable. So there's still money coming into the city is my understanding on the, on the tax rules. There's some other things. To the gentleman's question, and the reason I'm lumping them together is because the information is also on the site. We had a number of other pieces of information coming in during the process. Mass Development did some work, including the appraisals and a survey. Valley CDC did some work as part of other work that they were doing for the city. And one of them is a fit study for Maple Street School that shows conceptually how that school could be developed with the parking for new residents on site, public parking on site, a public playground on site, and tenant, private tenant space on site. Now, that doesn't require a developer to develop to that plan, but it did give the committee an idea of how these different components could fit on the site. So for anybody who's listening at home, obviously for yourselves, Counselor, I just recommend that website as a good resource for additional information into the process and the information that went into the RFP.
Thank you. Any other counselors?
Counselor Sarret? Just to, just to respond to the concern earlier about the parking, but I think this is, also helps respond more to potentially perceived neighborhood impacts in terms of existing outdoor commodities and resources. So if you look at the RFP, there's, there's at least two things to consider here. One is Section 3, the Development Goals and Objectives. And that sketches out kind of a more amorphic kind of consideration for both neighborhood impact as well as many, as well, which, which includes specifically, if you take away parking spaces, if you take away a park, you know, how will this, how will development of any one of these buildings or all of them affect public spaces? And the, and the developer has to, has to answer for this in more of a narrative form. And so I think, and which specifically also includes of a traffic and parking management plan, it, both in terms of specifically the, the locations themselves, but how they impact the neighborhood. And by how they impact the neighborhood could also mean is that removing potentially parking or also importantly, green space from that. or also importantly, green space from that. So that's, that's, and again, the consultant can correct me if I'm wrong here. And so, so it's covered there pretty substantially, and I, and we're gonna, and the, any prospective developer is going to have to answer to that. And then again, just to come back to the criteria again, and this is another important reason why criteria two, sorry, criterion two was created, is that initially, if I remember correctly, the retention of, or potential retention of Pep and Jim and/or the cafeteria auditorium was included in what now exists as criterion three. And so if those, if two of those were retained, it actually accommodated for, substantially for that requirement, which would also include public parking, neighborhood playgrounds, et cetera. And so by taking that out and making a second criterion, it actually puts more onus on the potential developer to then maintain or create new spaces, which could include but not limited to public parking, et cetera. So I don't know if that answers the question, but there's a lot of consideration in this RFP. A lot of people have talked about flexibility and also, you know, how sensitive this is to the overall needs. It's really all baked in there, and I think any prospective developer would certainly not, I'd imagine, and again, the city council and other members of the city administration get another, we get another bite out of the apples, I believe someone said, you know, this is all coming back to us. And so if there was the feeling, you know, within a variety of the layers that we've already created, what happens after this, and then when it comes back to a city council meeting that there isn't substantial, say, parking created, or green space, important too, or recreation space, we get to talk about that. So it's, I understand the concern because this definitely affects businesses that exist downtown, the current dynamic of our community, but I think that that's well, very well accounted for in multiple mechanisms in the RFP, so.
Thank you. Counselor Peak?
Yeah. Definitely agree with what Counselor Zarret has said. Throughout a lot of this process, and I think it's totally understandable, I fall into it too, but I do think we have, we sometimes fall into speculation here. The whole point of this thing is to ask, what do people, what's out there? What would people like to do with these things? We could decide, it could come back that nobody wants to do any affordable housing, the only thing somebody wants to do is to knock the whole thing over and build a parking lot there, and we could say, well, that's not, we don't like that. So we're going to sit on for a year and figure out something else. Like, we could, you know, we don't know what's going to come. It could be all crap that we're not interested in, or it could be amazing. But we, until we actually ask what people are willing to do, we're just speculating. The other thing I would, that I forgot to say earlier, is that also when we talk about housing, new housing and schools, it is relevant. MSBA produces housing projections for cities and towns. They happen to do that through my employer. They happen to do that through me. I happen to be the one who runs their model. East Hampton hasn't required one in a while, but I hope I won't get in trouble for my boss for saying this. I run all the towns just because it's easier to just do it all in a big batch, and, and I check on East Hamptons. We're seeing minorly declining employment, or enrollment going forward in our school, which it doesn't surprise. You know, I'm 33, I'm a millennial, I don't have kids. Most of my friends don't have kids. Our careers are stalled, housing is expensive, and we're scared of the future. So like, there's just, the people who normally would be having a lot of kids are having less kids than they would have been having, you know, decades ago when the world was more affordable and more stable and not heating at a rapid rate. So like, I just think, like, we, we are seeing, the, the buildings are the same size, but the number of school-aged children in East Hampton, as in most of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and in fact, most of the United States, is set to not plummet, but decline in the next few decades. So the idea of the addition of some extra, some families coming in, that's not actually a horrible thing from the perspective of schools. You don't want out-of-control, like, increases in enrollment because that means that you need to find a way to provide new space, but you don't really want huge decreases in enrollment either because that comes with its own problems when it comes to funding and resources and whatnot. So I just want to just throw that out there. It's just a thing that we need to consider because I know there's a fiscal angle, which is totally understandable to spook some people, but I do think that, you know, when you take it in that context, this actually is not necessarily a horrible thing.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rist?
I've already spoken.
That's okay.
Alright. I have a couple things I wanted to, okay? Sorry. I wanted to reinforce what John Tietro said about our affordable housing and how little we have in East Hampton. While back, we had to deal with the Treehouse property. It was a 40B development because we didn't have enough affordable housing in East Hampton, and we had no control over it. We have control over these buildings, and we have control over affordable housing and what it means for the city. I wanted to also reinforce the fact that we must give the mayor the flexibility on the price of the buildings. They should be a dollar. If, if we can get a majority, or if not all, affordable housing in these buildings, selling them for a dollar is incentive to a developer that's going to take the risk to do this work. There are grants and there are other avenues of funding and revenue for developers, but if we charge for these buildings, I believe she's correct, we won't get anybody to look at affordable housing. They're going to want to do market-rate apartments. Now, if there is a mix in some development proposal of affordable and market-rate, the mayor will, and that committee will decide what the, whether we should charge for the buildings. So I do not, I hope this council won't ask to put in place in any amendment a dollar value on the buildings. Let's let the mayor negotiate that. Let's let that come back to us, and we can decide at that point. The other thing I want to reinforce what Mr. Brown said about the Council on Aging, we must build a new Council on Aging building, and I believe once this city pays some of its debt, like the high school, that should be the next thing we look at. Moving the Council on Aging into that building would be a mistake. And what do we do with the upper floors? The upper floors would be empty. Do we build housing there? Do we control that? It, it would be a waste. So I just wanted to reinforce that. Also, with regard to the auditorium, we just voted on $3.25 million for city space to build a brand-new auditorium, and I believe that'll cover us for auditorium needs. So just wanted to make those comments. I'm prepared to vote in favor of this project, this RFP, excuse me.
Counselor Denham?
Yeah, I just want to say that I support the RFP. I'm on board with it, and to Counselor Peak's point, and to the wishes of the community in terms of things that they would like to see, I think, as a community, how we hold all of those pieces are going to, are, are, are what are going to make us a desirable community for people to live in, right? And so I just want to acknowledge that, and I want to acknowledge the things that folks said today in terms of, you know, wanting the gym, wanting the, you know, how do we maximize the services and the resources for the community to make East Hampton desirable, a desirable place to live, where we are competing with lots of other communities in terms of population, right? So I just want to, I just want to acknowledge that. But I appreciate the work that you did in, in guiding the, the group. I think this, I support, as someone who grew up in poverty, I support affordable housing, and I think this is, it's part of what attracted me to East Hampton was the economic diversity of the community, and I, I want to see that maintained very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kuzinski? You're muted.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to say just how proud I think this community should be because there was an opportunity for everyone to be heard, and I believe that this community, and I know this, the property committee worked diligently to bake into the proposal flexibility and not to be rigid in any way about any issue, but to leave it to a process of negotiation, and hopefully, we'll be able to get plenty of bids. I think this particular program offers, I think the community's mentioned lots of different factors, but for example, I think anyone could find, whether they live in the affordable housing or they don't, will find benefit in any of the community amenities that we've discussed. So I think that is an advantage and makes this project, I think, unique. I'm not aware of housing for, affordable housing that encompasses the opportunities for spaces that could be shared by everyone, where there can be an interaction, a place of interaction between those in the units, those not in the units, and at all levels of income in our community. I think that makes East Hampton even more attractive, if it can be accomplished. And if it can't be accomplished, I think it may very well be because of the economic climate and conditions, not because this council and this mayor baked into this proposal something rigid, but interest rates have been going up dramatically, the climate is a bit uncertain, and we may get bids, we may not get bids. One thing I think this community should remember is that, I know Counselor Peak had mentioned zoning as a way of including the buildings in the zoning for smart growth, and that the state may be giving us an economic incentive to do so in payments. But in addition to that, if we find that the proposals don't work, or there needs to be negotiation, I for one, and I believe this council stands ready to make adjustments to the zoning, which will make sure that housing can be affordable in East Hampton. That's an important factor that the city controls, we control. So I keep that in, in the, in the back of my mind, and I would encourage all the counselors to keep it in the back of their mind, that there is, there are other opportunities. And as we go forward, as a wise person said, we'll be casting our line into the water and seeing what, who bites and how we can proceed. So I will be voting for this plan, and I appreciate everyone's efforts.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Peak?
Sorry, I'm taking up a lot of time. So just as a point of clarification, because a few people mentioned it, we are not required tonight to make any determination about the price, right? Or to come up with any sort of policy about the price. Because I just, I agree, like, what I'd like to see is a lot of affordable housing and no price. If there were a developer that came in and was like, oh, we'll do 90% market rate and 10% affordable, then I might think a little bit differently about that at that point. So, so that's just why, I was just, like, we've discussed it a little bit, and I was like, oh, man, did I get blindsided here and we have to discuss the, okay, great.
Any other counselors? Seeing none? I'm gonna finish with something. I think it's really important for the community to read page 28. They say that it's coming back to us. Page 29 and 30, it is, it's really important for the community to know what the evaluation committee is going to do. These two pages are really important. If you didn't read the RFP yet, you should read it. You should review homework for the next week because it's really important. This is the parameters that they're going to follow to see every single developer. And I'm really happy with those ones. Been saying that, I will take a motion. Counselor Kuzinski, you have it?
Yes. Mr. President, I would like to bring forward a motion, and if you would allow me to read it at this time?
Yes. Can you, we have the resolution and then the two vote, the four votes.
Resolution and four votes. I move that the city council resolve and vote to declare former schools as no longer necessary for municipal use and to authorize the disposition of same. The city council, whereas the city council for the city of East Hampton, Massachusetts, voted September 7, 2022, to accept the following real property structures and fixtures collectively called former schools from the school committee for the city of East Hampton School Committee. A, Maple Street School, Seven Chapel Street, East Hampton, Mass. Assessors map ID 54/24, the deed to which is found at book 106-2, page 14, in the registry of deeds for Hampshire County, Massachusetts. And B, Pepin School, Four Park Street, East Hampton, Mass. Assessors map ID 52/82. Source of ownership, unknown or undetermined at this time. And C, Pepin Parking Lot, Main Street, East Hampton. Assessors map ID 5577, the deed to which is found at book 725, page 131, in the registry of deeds for Hampshire County, Massachusetts. And D, Center School, Nine School Street, East Hampton, Massachusetts. Assessors map ID 52/18. Source of ownership, unknown or undetermined at this time. And whereas the city is the owner of the former schools, and whereas the former schools are surplus property and not presently needed for municipal purposes, and whereas the city now wishes to declare such former school surplus, and whereas the city council wishes to dispose of the former schools pursuant to a request, certain request for proposal RFP developed by the city of East Hampton, Massachusetts, all other applicable laws of the city of East Hampton and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, collectively laws. I move that the city council vote to declare the former schools as surplus property not presently needed for municipal purposes. Two, vote that the former schools are available for disposition. Three, vote to impose the use restrictions as detailed in the RFP attached here too and incorporated herein on the former school. And four, vote that the mayor of the city of East Hampton is authorized to circulate and publish, as necessary, the request for proposal included, including requirements of chapter 30B, developed by the city of East Hampton, Massachusetts, as required by the laws. Second.
We have a motion and a second for the city council resolution and vote to declare former schools as no longer necessary for municipal use and authorize, authorize the disposition of same. Any further discussion? Counselor Sarret?
One thing I forgot, Mr. President, and there was an email earlier that you received as well, just, just to the public and just to the council, that the copy of the, were you going to mention this, or? Just because I forgot to mention it earlier. The cop, the, the copy of the RFP we have has some old dates in there, and we probably need to move to recognize the dates that the procurement officer provided, or that they will be provided later on.
It's going to be provided later, later on.
Okay.
But it's going to be a minimal changes in the RFP. There's not going to change anything substantials for the RFP.
Yeah, but just to recognize that there will be an update.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselor? Seeing none? Marianne?
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
David Muneer.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zarret.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, counselors. I will take a motion to close public hearing.
Still move.
Second.
No. We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Marianne?
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Dave Muneer.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zarret.
Aye.
Motion passes. Report of Standing Committee. Finance. Counselor Rist?
Counselors on the finance committee, I did receive a message that the school committee's finance committee can meet with us, so we will have a meeting next week at 5:30. I'm making it 5:30 so that it's easier for people who are working to attend. This meeting will be between, the only thing on the agenda will be a meeting, we've invited the school committee's finance committee as requested by, at the budget discussions, to quarterly meet to discuss financing of the schools. This will be a meeting that will deal primarily with expectations and does not, will not necessarily go into the details of any financial matters, just to see where we're going to go with it. So it's an initial introductory meeting, so it will happen at 5:30 in conference room one, and I hope people can attend in person. I say this to the school committee because I feel that's better.
Next week, 5:30.
Consulor Kuzinski, you have any question about the report?
Yes, I do. I, I, uh, I heard 5:30, I heard next week, but I didn't hear for the public the date.
The date is the 28th?
Twenty eighth, if it's Wednesday.
Twenty eighth. 5:30 on the 28th. I apologize, I don't believe I mentioned that.
Thank you for asking.
Should have.
Thank you. Public safety. Consulor Sarat?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we have not met since our last meeting. Uh, we are scheduled to meet on October 11 at 6:00 PM. I believe it will be in room one, but that's to be determined based on availability. Uh, our quarterly report, uh, on that date will be with the police department. Uh, we will also be reviewing and hopefully develop consensus and be able to report out, uh, the ordinance review committee's final report. Thank you for your patience on that. We will discuss the new city quick action, so, um, I'll connect with, uh, any relevant stakeholders uh, for that meeting. Um, and also combined at that time, uh, just to review again, the chief police will be, I believe, finalizing, uh, locations of this phase of, uh, of, uh, recommendation for use of electric speed monitoring signs. Um, at this time reviewing the agenda, I see two items that require extensions. Um, so I, I'd like to make a motion to extend both the ordinance review committee's final report as well as, and I thought, I thought I did this last time, but, uh, the request to review uh, safety of the sidewalk on South Street at Main Street intersection. Both 90 days for those, please.
Second. We have a motion and a seconds to extend any day the ordinary review committee with final report and the request to review safe, the safety of the sidewalks on South and Main Street intersection. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Marianne?
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez. JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Dave Munier. Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And just as a quick note, the, uh, the review of South Street Main Street four-way traffic light. Now that school is in session, I believe at some point, uh, there will be a, a new traffic count uh, relevant, relative to that, uh, agenda item that may be able to help us, uh, move forward there or at least have more information. Thus concludes.
Thank you, Consulor. Appointments, Consulor?
Apologies, Mr. President. I'm still a co-host and I'm afraid if I shut, um, my computer off, I will inadvertently disconnect.
That's a good, that's a good concern. Let me see.
We'd have to do this all over.
I apologize to everybody.
Start from the beginning. Call everyone back.
We move as a co-host. There you go. Uh, Consulor Riley?
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Um, so the appointment committee last met on, uh, Thursday, September 15th. Um, and before us was the appointment of David Kutcher to the Economic Development and Industrial Commission. Um, so in lieu of attending that meeting, um, I had a conversation with him on Wednesday, September 14th. Um, we discussed some of his, um, qualifications. So, um, he has been a resident in East Hampton since 2005. Um, he lives in the downtown area, um, and currently owns two small businesses that are residing in the Eastworks Mill Building. Um, he specializes in antique Japanese artwork and web design. And he also has previous city committee experience as the chair of the Northampton Arts Council. Um, so, you know, in discussing roles, uh, on EDIC, he'd like to provide his, um, web strategy experience to reach out to small businesses, um, to connect, uh, small businesses to the greater East Hampton community. And then, uh, to help our small businesses tap into local grant funding uh, that exists for businesses in the Pioneer Valley. Um, I wholeheartedly support, uh, his recommendation and the committee voted 2-0, um, with one absence, um, to move that recommendation forward.
The motion.
All right. Um, so in the form of a motion, I would like to, um, approve David Kutcher to the Economic Development and Industrial Commission with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the majority appointment. Any further discussion? Consulor Sarat?
I just want to speak really quickly just to the strength of the, uh, of the, of the applicant that you're getting here and then his membership. I think, uh, the, the chair very well summarized his qualifications and, uh, that, those, it is his, the, the depth of, of the applicant is, uh, as significant as the impressiveness of his, uh, of his resume. I think he will bring a very, uh, broad, uh, array of skills. And I think his ability to have started a very interesting niche, uh, entrepreneurial business in the midst of a pandemic will certainly, I think, bring a lot of information to the U.S.C., not to mention the skills he brings, just in general, the, the understanding of the business of web development. So just wanted to put that in there.
Thank you, Consulor. Any other Consulor?
Yes, I'm sorry, just one last thing, Mr. President. I'd be remiss in, uh, mentioning this. Um, I am grateful to the chair of EDIC, Gwen Morrissey, um, who helped craft some of those interview questions. Um, so I thank, uh, EDIC's involvement in that process. And then also to emphasize that EDIC was the organization that recruited, uh, Mr. Kutcher, uh, for the appointment. So, uh, full support from that organization. Thank you.
Any other Consulor? Seeing none? Marianne?
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Dave Munier.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And, uh, currently there is no business before the appointment committee. Um, so there are no currently scheduled meetings. Uh, one will occur when a new appointment process starts and thus concludes. Thank you.
Thank you, Consulor. Ordinance. Consulor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the ordinance committee did meet last night and I want to just give a quick update on some of the items on our agenda. Um, so the first item on our agenda, which is the ordinance review committee's final report, we have submitted to the clerk, um, many, many changes, um, to the ordinances. And we're still trying to find the most optimal way to advertise those. So I'm working with the clerk, Barbara La Bombard, to make sure we can do that. Um, so that is in process. Uh, we also, last night, we had a, a pretty detailed discussion on the abandoned storefront ordinance. And I will say that we will be meeting October 4th at 6:00 PM. I'm thinking conference room one, but we haven't confirmed that yet. Uh, and I want to put it out there publicly that this, this next meeting for the abandoned storefront ordinance is going to require some, some, um, input from city of, uh, employees. So we're going to be asking specifically the building commissioner, uh, or their designate to attend, um, the city planner or his designate to attend, uh, the city clerk to attend, uh, in order for us to be able to construct an ordinance that is, um, in the most cohesive ordinance that we can, uh, bring forward. Uh, and that's very important. And I also want to just say that the, um, the CPC ordinance, we haven't received anything from the city solicitor that is, um, that we can use in, in committee yet. So that is something that we're going to talk about. Um, if we can't get, uh, an opinion that we can use publicly, um, what we're going to do with that. So just wanted to put that out there. Um, and again, our next meeting is October 4th at 6:00 PM. Thus concludes.
And we need a 90-day extension for the ordinance review committee final report.
Uh, okay. And I'll make that informal motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to extend, uh, for extension of 90-day the ordinance review committee final report. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Marianne?
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Dave Munier. Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thus conclude, right? Thank you. Property, Consulor Kuzinski, I think we don't have anything there. And I don't think we have any new business.
What Council on Aging position on our new business?
That is correct, Mr. President. No report from property?
Yes. And rules, Consulor Rist?
No report, Mr. President.
And we have new business. Consulor Rist?
We have a, a request from, uh, Human Resources to amend chapter seven for the COA program manager to, uh, change the classification to grade D. I move that this be sent to the ordinance committee for review.
We have a motion and a seconds to, uh, move to ordinance, uh, committee the amend of the city ordinance, chapter seven, section 717. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none? Marianne?
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Dave Munier.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Motion passes. Look like we do everything that we have in our agenda. Our next meeting, and I do have it here, is going to be Thursday. It's not going to be Wednesday. It's going to be the first Thursday of the month. That is going to be October 6th, I think, is it?
Yes.
October 6th. So it's not going to be Wednesday, it's going to be Thursday. Um, we have it, we cover everything we have in our agenda. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Marianne?
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Well, I'm not just, yes.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Dave Munier. Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Both, yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening. Bye.
Thank you.
See you, Salem, see you, JP.
Don't run off too quickly.
We have to sign stuff?
We sign, yes.
Don't go, guys.
You go, we have to sign.
Just don't go.